Please.
Vice Chair Crowley. Member Streznik Dean.
Here.
Member Kane is absent. Member Harris. Chair Lantis.
Here.
Member Maxwell.
Here.
Okay, we don't have a quorum. So what we're gonna do is we're just gonna maybe go into recess for 10 minutes and see if somebody shows up and if they don't, then we'll address that at that time. We'll have a short intermission. Go grab a popcorn.
Austin, you have a mission music for us? Diana. Are you somewhere interesting or just at home? Maybe home's interesting.
I've actually got this week and next week off and mostly what I'm doing is cleaning my house, which is not as exciting as you'd think. But my asthma is just killing me with this weather right now. So I'm coughing, so I thought I'd stay away from you.
All right.
Now that's on the public record. That's awesome.
Are you making progress on your house cleaning?
I'm at that stage where it's like you start peeling away the top layers of the junk drawer. And the junk drawer expands.
Yep.
That's where I'm at.
Yep.
What there's, there's, there's gotta be some like axiom or something because I don't ever remember ever putting anything in the junk drawer. But if I ever have to go look for something, it's so full when you open it, stuff just falls out of it. So it's not. Yeah.
This is true. And it sometimes falls behind the drawer into the drawer under it.
Hadn't thought about that one.
But yes, it's, that's what I'm working on. It's been a year coming, basically. That was my plan for this time last year, but I was sick, so.
We have mail of secondary and tertiary importance that has overtaken surface. You dealt with. Not so important that it immediately gets filed and then it's it's out of.
Yeah, I, I've got that too. I'm actually stunned by how much mail we get considering that I get so much email.
Yep.
So. But this follows, we were just at the Kansas Museums Association Conference last week, so that was a lot of fun.
Good.
So that was good. And we were awarded an Award of Excellence for our work on the Smithsonian exhibit last year.
Well, congratulations.
Yeah, we're pretty excited about that.
Where was it held?
Fort Scott. Which is a fantastic historic city. It was a lot of fun to go there. All of the museums were open and museum employees like to geek out at other people's museums.
I don't know whether you were on yet or not, but Commissioner Harris said he's on his way, so that's what we're, that's what the delay is for. So hopefully we'll have a forum here in just minutes. Time flies when you're having fun.
Yeah.
Howdy, Commissioner.
Let the record show that we're now joined by Commissioner Harris, so we'll reopen the meeting and first item on the agenda would be the consent agenda, the 6th September 26, 2024 meeting minutes. Are there any? Did we lose Diana? There she is. The 2020, the 20, September 26, 2024 meeting minutes. Are there any, anybody see anything need for correction or addition?
No.
Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda is approved. Item number four, at this time, I would like to ask the planning commission members to make a declaration of any conflict of interest or of any ex parte or outside communication that might influence their ability to hear all sides on any item on the agenda so that they might come to a fair decision. Hearing none, new business, review chapter two of the city comprehensive plan. Zach Mark.
All right, so this actually serves as more of an update. Sorry, I'm trying to get the remote work here. Ask you to do next slide. So this okay, all right, so we have been working on the, we have been working on the revision for the chapter two portion of the comprehensive plan, and that has been based on different department feedback. It's been focused on updating the changes that have occurred over the past 20 years. There have been some updates sort of inserted intermittently, and we'll talk a little bit more about that when we start addressing chapter three. But overall, we reviewed that internally and the different departments provided updates to the current plan. So what is included with the pack is actually the current adopted chapter two and revised plan, or the revised chapter two and on showing to the commission at our first December meeting. There was been some changes that have still been provided by some departments, some adjustments that have been needed made, so I wanted to make sure I had that completed before we presented it. But chapter two did cover quite a wide range of information that needed to be updated, including demographics, which we did touch on during the introduction, so current population status, things of that nature. Education, reviewing and updating the enrollment and the school information. Parks, we've had a lot of developments in parks over the past 20 years, including whole new parks and additional facilities that have been created. Utilities, same story, additional facilities have been built. And then with the police and fire departments, they were also able to provide general updates. One major trend across all of this has been people are using technology a lot now, which compared to 2004, absolutely. But chapter two as a whole, you know, reflects the existing conditions of the community. So there wasn't a lot of you know, back and forth that needed to be done as far as that was concerned. We wanted to make sure that there was updated information in there, however. So do you plan on bringing the fully updated chapter two to the commission again in a few weeks' time for full review? But we did have a chapter two public engagement session that merged with chapter three. And the reason I combined those two in this public engagement was that chapter three focuses on the goals and objectives of the adopted plan. And our existing conditions really reflect whether or not those goals and objectives have been put into play or whether they've been working for us, maybe the past 20 or in some cases 15 years. Chapter three has been updated, at least as far as I can tell, more recently than other parts of the plan back in 2010. So when I was creating the engagement session, I decided to take a look at the goals and objectives to get a jumpstart on that portion and created some activities that we'll do here in a bit that allow people to sort of provide some basically get a temperature check on where we think people feel the community is as far as our goals and objectives as they currently stand. So within those goals within chapter three, there's three overarching ones. The first is future land use and infrastructure. And the goals beneath that one include land use plans, gateways, and that is creating specific entry points into the community. Planned annexations, short term or long term vision for annexation into the community. Then cross town traffic links, just ensuring that there's adequate transportation networks. And underneath each of these goals are specific objectives and how we intend to actually meet those. Within quality of life, we have a sub-goal of public art, which our current comprehensive plan wanted to see more of incorporated into the community. Landscaping, which just encourages additional value to development. University neighborhood, which promotes the general area around Ottawa University. And then housing quality and diversity, supporting the development of affordable and appropriate housing. This is one we see obviously a ton within our meetings with this commission, because many of our decision decisions made here are supported by an aspect of the comprehensive plan, and this is usually, usually the one most referenced. And then parks and recreation, continuing to provide adequate facilities to the community. And then the last main category is economic development, which is the largest and has the most goals and objectives. So the sub-goals would be downtown, which is just the general promotion of retail and residential development. And then a mixed-use downtown, which in my opinion is fairly similar to that first goal. Both of those things kind of happening concurrently. Retail and commercial services opportunities, basically enhancing the opportunities within the community, improving the workforce and labor pool, expanding and enhancing the existing workforce through a variety of means. Infrastructure and business climate, support for improvements in growth areas. And community marketing, promoting local assets, and then public health. And biking pedestrian facilities, which basically is a larger umbrella, just promoting non-motorized or alternative of travel within Ottawa. So the next steps for this revision process would be to consolidate the updates for the existing conditions, chapter two. And again, I would bring those to all at our December meeting. Reformat them within the updated document and begin that process of analyzing our existing goals and objectives by identifying change priorities or opportunities for new emphasis and updates created for chapter three. Should reflect our existing conditions. And where we see Ottawa go in the next 10 to 20. So what I did for our public engagement session, which we had three people attend, so that was nice, better than our zeros, was I had set up three stations that we have here. And each station represented one of the umbrella goals, so future land use and infrastructure, quality of life and economic development. And then had little color-coded sheets of paper, which you can see on the tables and the next to Ashley, that represented the sub-goals. And connected to each of those sub-goals were all the different objectives for each one of those goals. And what I asked participants to do to encourage discussion or just kind of get an idea of what our goals have been, is to kind of mentally rank them. So each umbrella goal station here essentially has four different folders that rank things in order of priority. So the highest folder is this is a really high priority objective. We want to make sure that we are actually pushing this even higher than it currently is within our comprehensive plan. The green folder is keep the same, you know, it's an important goal and it's an important objective. We want to keep it, but you know, we don't need to push it up any higher. We definitely don't need to amend it or anything like that. Blue is consider revising, you know, maybe there's some things that don't really apply as much as they used to or don't really work. Then the last one is consider removal. For example, not one that I necessarily think should be removed, but one that has not really had a lot of progress, at least as far as I can tell, since the plan was adopted, was the university neighborhood section. You know, is this a section that we need to completely revise and sort of adapt for a different category? Or can it be folded into maybe our entry point goal, something of that nature? It's one that obviously has good intent, but has not really been acted on in the past 15 years. So what can we do to maybe change that? But that is essentially what the rest of this meeting is intended for. Discussion and participation in the activity. So I take this information, kind of creating a larger chart. We've already had staff do it as well. And it's just a nice way to get some physical feedback essentially on our goals and objectives and kind of allows you to think a little critically. I frankly just used to work in K-12 education. I think this is just an interesting way to kind of put things into play. But we will be having an online survey that will be going out to the community as well in the coming weeks that addresses some of these comments. Well, online surveys do seem to be responded to a little more frequently than our public engagement sessions are attended. So that's kind of where we're at right now. But yeah, the goal of this evening was to have you all also participate in this activity. Activity. Commissioner Streznik Dean, I apologize, this is probably a hard one for you to do over Zoom. But you know, we're welcome to have some discussion or some comments and go from there. It is more of a physical thing, so you know, walking around and stuff like that.
I guess the first thing I would like to know is all the meetings that you all put on, and you put on quite a few meetings. What was the total attendance at all of them?
Oh. I'd say less than 20. I want to say between 15 and 20, can't remember the exact amount.
Out of a community of basically 12,000, we had 20 people that were interested in the
I, I appreciate that. I would say that participation in the, in the online survey was fairly robust.
It was.
That has been. I mean, we're approaching, we're probably at about over 200. I need to check the numbers from this week, but that, that has been, again, a very surprisingly well responded to survey. Coming from a larger community, I think I mentioned before, St. Joe, we had a very poor response rate for our community survey, and Ottawa has been very active with that. Yeah, it's, I'm not sure what the situation is. It could be timings. We tried to mix up locations, things of that nature. Again, our best attended one has been over at the Franklin County Historic Society, so I mean, maybe that's the good luck place to be doing it. But yeah, we don't get a ton of physical turnout, but we do have engagement online, which is
And how much longer are you gonna run the online survey?
Survey, that survey will likely stay up. Still like kind of want to get responses, so probably through the end of the year, and then the newer survey will come up in the next few weeks.
I, may I ask a question?
Please.
Okay, so I'm wondering, and this might be a little outside the box, but our high school seniors are going to be the people who we're going to be trying to want to keep. And I'm wondering if we've thought about possibly working with some of the senior classes to do this survey, to get a sense of what kind of community would keep them here in over the next 10 to 15 years. And to actually go to the school and engage them there instead of having them try to come to you. Just even though they're still young, these are the people we hope that will give them a reason to stay, and I think it might be helpful to talk with them about what it is that would need to happen to keep them here.
I appreciate that comment very much, and Zach's writing it down, and I think even beyond stay, you know, what kind of community they want to return to, to.
Yeah, true. I would, that's, that, I agree with that, too.
I think the other thing that we should maybe say is that Zach and I were invited to the, is it the Chamber steering committee? I'm gonna get the name of exactly which committee we were invited to. I say that to say, and maybe we need to do a better job of inviting ourselves out to some groups, but if you're aware of a group that meets that would enjoy the opportunity to participate in a comp plan conversation, we're very happy to go on the road with that, too.
I think your biggest disadvantage now is social media is not kind in terms of its algorithms, and it may not be an issue of people being disinterested, but of people just not realizing that some of these meetings have happened just because it didn't show up in their feed at the right time.
Well, if we go to the, I mean, I'm, a couple of them, I'll let other people. Let's, if we can put up the economic development slide. You know, downtown promotion. We should try to go speak to the Main Street group.
For sure.
Should offer to go, because they're always looking for, all these groups are always looking for speakers. And for the mixed-use downtown, same thing, retail, same thing. Improvement of workforce for labor, we should see if we can go speak to the, I think they're having a social later this month, we go speak to FCDC and obviously the commissions. Infrastructure and business climate, again, FCDC, Main Street, the Chamber. And community marketing, obviously the Chamber, public health, obviously the Franklin County Health Department. Those are people that we should specifically seek out and try to have a conversation with them, I think. You know, bikes and pedestrians. Twenty years ago, we had nobody to talk to. Now we do because we're becoming a hub for bike activities for Eastern Kansas. So I think whatever that group would be, we need to go talk to that group about what they would like to say.
I can definitely reach out to be a little more impressive on that particular tactic. Yeah, especially as we're getting into the goals section. Introduction is one thing, existing conditions, but goals is definitely something that is far more fluid and has likely changed over the past 20 years in a way that is harder to quantify than a census report. So definitely something we're gonna be looking forward to next month, getting that section of it. Yeah, I mean, we get involvement, we get response. The people who do attend, they are participating, which is appreciated. Yeah, as many.
I was just thinking, if we give we give credibility, we, we tell them these groups that we want to partner with them. If we reach out to them on these various things, then I mean, a lot of times they won't reach out to us for whatever reason, but if we reach out to them, then I think is putting together a comprehensive plan update, then we've done what we can to be inclusive. And so I think that's, it would be a good start.
I appreciate that very much. I, I'll also say I did have the opportunity to speak to the optimist about it.
Yes.
It is, and we're excited to get out there and do more.
Thanks. Anybody else got any comments on what we, what we're talking about tonight? I mean, surely you guys, at least on one of them.
Well, okay, so I just scribbled down a few notes. One was, it's astonishing to see how much work there's going to go into just updating the data. This data is so old already.
A little more volume, I'm having trouble.
You too.
Oops. Sorry, I'll turn mine up too. How's that?
Better.
Okay. There's so much data to update, so I really appreciate all of the people who are going to be involved in just updating data. Because it's, it's old. It was great, you know, 20 years ago, but now it's already old. I'm curious how things, where you'll roll in, things like technology, charging stations, that sort of thing, which were things that weren't even on the radar when this plan was written before.
As far as like existing conditions or?
Yeah, does that just fall under utilities?
Likely. Basically how that's been working is I've been inserting them where they make the most sense, sorry. And that is likely where those would fall. Utilities, electric, things of that nature. It can also obviously kind of roll into just generalized infrastructure as it is a structure component, I guess is the best way to put that.
In a lot of communities, isn't that private? I mean, that's, those are usually generated. I think some towns do have, some towns do have public charging stations.
And I don't want to get out ahead of, of any other body in town, but that is my sense. When I, I'll speak a little bit freely. When I was in Lindesborgh, we had a free of charge public charging station that we installed in 2019. But I think the state of the art today is probably that, that is going to be, my sense is that that's going to be private infrastructure.
Diane, what else did you have?
I'm just curious what was meant by university neighborhood. Was it? Because I happen to live in the university neighborhood and my perspective of the university is there's the university and then just houses around it. So I was curious what was anticipated that that, what, what were we really looking at with that concept of a university neighborhood?
To kind of briefly summarize it, they were essentially looking for a sense of place and arrival. I, my takeaway has been sort of the Oriad area of Lawrence, probably the Aggieville section of Manhattan. Not necessarily like a full commercial change, but an area that has a very distinct university oriented feel. That's been my takeaway from that. And like you said, it doesn't necessarily achieve that. It's a very well-maintained university. It's a well-maintained area overall. But there is definitely a distinct separation between the campus and the surrounding area. Not to say that there haven't been changes over the past, you know, 10, 15, 20 years. And OU is active in the community and things like that, but it definitely did not, I think, achieve what their original goal was, which again, is my understanding has been to create a very distinct Ottawa University kind of focused area within the community.
I see, okay.
At one time, and I think, I'm trying to think when I was first on the planning committee. There was a store, retail store that wanted to come in where liquor store gas station is now. And we, at some of the discussions we were having at that time was to turn that whole area there at the corner of Ninth and Main, turn all four corners into student-oriented businesses, you know, whether it's a coffee shop. Of course, then the ownership on two of those corners changed. And that's no longer, I don't think, a viable part of the discussion is, if there's still a couple of businesses there that are good university businesses, but there's areas there that will, we can't, we can't do what we wanted to do 20 years ago.
And Franklin, the need for brick and mortar buildings may, or services may what, maybe to channel that activity into downtown even more, but.
Yeah, I understand, but that, I was just
Yeah, speaking to 20 years ago, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's like 20 years ago, we didn't have two bike trails that worked in Ottawa, Kansas. We didn't have a bike trail.
There's been a lot of really positive development for sure. That's one thing we wanted to capture, and then that comes back kind of to the activity portion. There have been some things that have just been achieved or have been like in a really good state and don't sort of set aside as just policy that we maintain as opposed to a distinct goal. So are there any other questions? Sorry.
Oh, I think, I think looking at that university enhancement, I, I think maybe that really almost rolls more into our need for a variety of housing types. Because we are seeing the university struggling to meet those housing needs and having to spread out over the city. And so maybe that's where that university neighborhood and, and area, maybe it shifts into that direction, which is how do we help the university meet those housing needs? May, maybe that mixed use happens with housing with those coffee shops on the first floors instead of having to actually create a district somewhere.
I mean, personally I promote it. Usage, at least in some extent. Again, the overarching goal, I think, was very well-intentioned. You have so there's a lot of really good opportunities. Ottawa is obviously much smaller, but there's still really good options.
Then my, my last question was with the conversation about annexation, are you getting any feedback from people in those potential annexing areas about how they feel about that or what the community is thinking that's going to look like?
There hasn't been really much of a large discussion with annexation. The closest that has really come has actually been an application for an annexation that we received a few weeks ago that I think is likely going to fall. TDD on that, but overall, the that just seems to be a blank wall for a lot of people. There's not a lot of thought about it. It's not something that we've been pursued as far as bringing in additional area. Things that we have been focusing on as far as land use has been identifying all the areas that are available in our city. They are. So that's been a big focus few months. Annexation as a whole on our radar, there has been some interest from some adjacent property owners, but it hasn't been a major discussion. Or really on the surface. Or really on the surface.
That's all I had.
Can you? This might be a half step back, but. I'm struggling a little bit to see what the end game is with this. I understand we're upgrading, updating all of the information. Talk to me a little bit about where this process leads. You're talking a little bit about how you become more informed about what the community is interested in and what they view. Tell me what the, what the end game is and how that impacts. Real activity moving forward.
Yeah, so, I mean, I will be frank, this was originally just a fun opportunity for hopefully more people who attended these public engagement sessions to actually be involved with it and have discussions with the people that they're there with and kind of learn more about the plan as a whole. With poor attendance, this has now been something that's been moved to departments, commissioners, to also potentially partake in to kind of get an understanding of what these engagement sessions look like. And the ultimate goal is to update our goals and policies that we can then adopt and update our policies accordingly to be able to actually implement. This is why we're leaning towards an online survey going forward from this. But this particular activity is geared towards more physical discussion, interaction. Again, it's intended for a public engagement session that just does not have strong attendance.
And I would, I would add, the end game is a really well developed comprehensive plan that can be adopted in May that will inform the actions of this body for the next 10 to 20. That's.
As well as others.
As well as others, yeah.
Looking at the goal, the overarching project, yes, I thought you.
Okay.
We're also though, I don't think staff is. In case we haven't been clear on this, while we want to make sure that it's up to date, we are not proposing a lot of radical. It's cleaning up numbers. It's. Saying we do have two trails now, or those kinds of things, we're not, we don't see ourselves proposing really radical.
Well, it's kind of an interesting process because. Data is always good, data is important. Then in a situation like this, data is informing you about what has happened. In other words, you're bringing a lot of statistical data up to date, which just shows you how that progression has happened. It doesn't necessarily inform what the best direction is moving forward. Because there could be, I hate to use that word radical, but there could be some very innovative or. Not really completely obvious good choices that should be part of that plan that the data won't inform at all. It may be a question of where you want that data to be in the next 20 years as opposed to if you just leave it alone and let, let natural evolution process happen, it's going to be this way. But if you. Have innovation initiative in certain areas, it could have a dramatic impact. That's the part of this, it's any documents, I'm not just picking on the city, I'm not picking on anybody actually, but. But that's a trap in, in a process like this, is sometimes you can lose the discussion on innovation. Because people are looking at what they've had and what they have done and not thinking forward about, ah, but that's not what I want to do. And, you know. There just are some potentially very exciting things when you consider Ottawa's location. We have. Lots of good highway access, I mean, there's just, and the spread from Kansas City comes this way. Anybody who is bold enough to get out on the interstate at 7:00 AM in the morning or 6:00 realizes there's already lots of people. Doing the back and forth already, more. I just can't believe it sometimes, actually, how that's changed. Which would be an interesting statistic probably also to see. But, but I'm just saying, the suggestion really is that for communities who have a. Well defined. Vision for who they are, who they want to be. There are opportunities there, they're going to be there. And it's sort of the defining who you want to be. Do I want to be 12,000 people in 20 years because we like it this way? Or does 15 or 20? 25? And if that were true, if that were part of the vision. Then I would look at these things differently. Every category we're talking about, I would think of them a little differently. If you said upfront, you know, I think we want to be engaged in growth. And define what growth is, of course, does that mean more people living here, does it mean more business? What does it actually mean, you have to define that. But my point is, I would make different choices to be a part of my comprehensive plan if I had, if I had certain goals that related to things that aren't necessarily what people are thinking about right now. It may be what they should be thinking about.
And I think I'll respond, if I may, with a couple of thoughts. One is, some of the data is just trying to set a factual.
Baseline.
Factual baseline.
Yeah.
And we want to, I think we want to. You know, the, the current comp plan makes some assumptions about growth. And there's a difference between making an assumption about growth and talking about goal setting around growth. And so I think, I would say that we want to both. Be realistic in assumptions. And also then have conversations about what are our goals? I think staff assumes we want to grow and I think staff assumes. I assume that we don't necessarily have an upper limit when we talk about. We want to grow. I think we maybe need to do a better job of asking that question in our survey. Because if the community says, you know, we want to get to 18,000 because then we have more services, but 18,001 becomes, you know, an unpleasant place to live. That, that's an absolutely important piece of information to have. We maybe needed to focus in on asking that question a little bit more. What is your, you know, how big is Ottawa in 2050? And why, is that a good thing or a bad thing?
Yeah, I think it's a whole other discussion when you take off the boundaries. And so, and say, here, think about whatever you want to think about in terms of what's possible. If you want your life to be different in what ways? And you want your community to be different in what ways? Maybe it's a quality of life thing, here's what I want. Well, to get the quality of life, you actually need 5,000 more people to have this, to make that happen. And that's the kind of thing I'd love to hear in this kind of a process is people talking about what their dreams are. And just allow that to happen. I get the problem. Of getting people to engage in that because it's not something that yields an immediate benefit. And we're culturally a little bit hung up on immediate benefit kind of stuff. But this is a big deal, in my mind, it's a big deal. And, and you know, I'm just thinking about, as you were talking about. Meeting groups and. You know, that's, that's a challenge, but somewhere along the way, it's important to engage as many different kinds of people in terms of their backgrounds, their work life, their personal life, whatever, their ages. To gain that comprehensive vision, to get a sense where you want to be. Anyway, fascinating, it's a, it's an exciting time, exciting possibilities. Anyway, I appreciate the dialogue, but.
Mr. Harris, do you have any?
Yeah. Diane brought up the OU area and the need for the housing issues. Last year, last year was horrible for them to try to get housing. But this year, the beginning of the year, the enrollment is down 40%.
Really?
40% and we have not had near the demand on the, for student housing.
I would ask you where you got that number, because that's not the number I've heard.
I come, I come by that from an individual at Ottawa University who does know.
That the total student population or the first year population?
That is the total enrollment. There was a mass exodus behind Dr. Reggie. And I don't know how much of it was, well, I don't know why, but I know there was a mass exodus left with Dr. Reggie this year. And the demand for the student housing has not been there. We have, right now, we had, we had a house set up that was going to be similar to the one that's, they're trying to put together on Main Street. Didn't have a single occupant interested in it. And we have another one that houses, there's room for four and there's only three in it. And there's not been inquiries about the fourth room. So I, I don't, like I said, I don't know why it's down, I can speculate. And my speculation was it had to do with Dr. Reggie's because Dr. Reggie's was very good for the university and very good for the community.
That's neat, that's.
Yes, that, that, that came from an individual in the, in the department that works with enrollment.
Well, there's still, you know, we talk about this and you just need to run up the road and look at Lawrence. As to why we need a comprehensive plan with guardrails. And that is because every four years, it seems. The thought of the. City Council, City Commission in Lawrence changes the direction it wants to go, town versus gown. There's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of, one, four years, there'll be a lot of no growth attitudes on the City Commission. And the developers and the builders and all of the interested parties say, no, we can't do that. So for the next four years. It goes the other way. And then four to six years later, it swings back in the other direction. But a good comprehensive plan has at least created in the years when there's sentiment for no growth, has at least kept some of the doors open. So you could have some growth. I think you've got to, in my, in my opinion, and I, and I'm sure it differs greatly from somebody, especially an academic point of view. But we've got to have, for future commissions, they've got to know why commissions in the past have done this, what the guidelines are for commissions in the future, what guidelines are for a community, what guidelines are for people who want to invest in our community. I mean, if we want to be a bedroom community for Kansas City, if we just want to be retail and housing, which I think we all know doesn't work very well, but if that's our goal, then businesses aren't going to look at us because they're going to see that and go, well, these people aren't going to be.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, one brings the other. More business brings more revenue. More houses eventually will bring more taxes. Also bring more people when you're dealing with three and a half to 4% unemployment rate. You know, when this was written, within 10 years before this was written, we had an eight and a half percent unemployment rate in Franklin County. We were the second highest in the state next to Lynn County. We had three doctors in Ottawa. If you remember, the.
I do remember.
The Community Development Block Grant Program that the state used to help communities all over the country put in a comprehensive plan, all over the state, put in a comprehensive plan. That started with the Farm Bureau lobbyist attending a meeting here in Ottawa. And he took that back to the Farm Bureau and Farm Bureau said, well, most of our small communities need this. And they got together with state legislators and put together, put together the Community Development Block Grant Program to help towns put together their comprehensive plans, small towns. And so. You, you, it can be very, it can be very broad, it can be very visionary, but you still need some kind of. Plan. For the future.
Yeah, no, I agree, totally.
Yeah, so.
I do.
So I want to applaud you guys for all this you're doing. I just want to make sure, as does Dr. Maxwell, that we get enough discussion with enough groups of people. So we get a good perspective all across the community.
Absolutely.
Reaching out to some of these organizations, reaching out to ECAN. I didn't, I didn't include ECAN, but reaching out to ECAN, reaching out to. All segments of the community that are organized, that want to help people in the community. The more input we get from all of them, the better served as a government we are.
Well, and a benefit of where we are in the plan is, again, we've moved through the introduction, which is fairly straightforward. It's an introduction to what a plan is and existing conditions, which again, are data that we collect internally essentially. We are now in the range of the point where all of these questions are coming up. Goals, long term visions, actual policy that we would like to see implemented, things of that nature. So we're at a very good point for these discussions to be occurring.
Actually, as we're talking about groups, another possible contact would be with churches because they have a cross section of people. And it's a natural collection point that people go to. So there may be some opportunities there to just meet with the people. They'll probably have a breakfast or a lunch or something and just have you come. It just, it would be another way.
Because there are so many of you on your staff, this is going to be easy to do.
Yes, right.
We understand that. But it's just a way to, it's, the more we, we've gone over this, the more we include, the better, I think.
Yeah, absolutely.
Commissioner Sturyst and Dean, do you have anything else?
I think we've covered a lot of the things that were on my mind, so thank you for asking.
Yes, Lucas?
So we would invite you to actually participate in this activity.
Okay, what, tell us what we need to do and figure out on the fly how Diana can be a part of this.
Diana, you're welcome to just chat away, you can jump off, which I guess does ruin our quorum actually. So it might just be more of a sitting, never mind. But essentially, how this works is stand up, you go to each station, take a look at the sheets with our subgoals on them and each subgoal has all of the objectives associated with it on there. And then you drop them into a folder where you would kind of classify that right now. Where, whether you think that's a, keep the same level of priority, whether you want to bump it up to high, whether you think we should revise it. I take that information, I collate it and I take a look at it and it gives, it's essentially a temperature check. It allows me to get an idea of where people who are active in the community are kind of thinking where we're at with our goals. Again, we plan on having an online survey and this was really more designed for a public engagement event where there are different members of the community coming in, engaging with each other. But this at least gives you an opportunity to kind of take a peek at what that was like. And any information is helpful information for us.
Well, if we can sort of speed that process up, let's get started with that so I can hit this hammer again.
Hey, I'd love to eat dinner, so yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, just take a look around and if you have questions, we'll discuss.
I've got a, I've got a recommendation for how you do this. There's, there's a. Pieces of paper here. Wait, I did, because I took all my little pieces of paper. That's how I.
Are all four of these the same?
Yeah, they're each for each overarching goal.
Can you shoot me a picture of the goals or are they on the agenda?
I don't believe the goals are on. The agenda, I apologize.
It's okay, can you, can you like shoot a picture of them and text it to me and I can?
Oh yeah, absolutely, I can do that, I can send you an email with the information.
And so we're talking about like basically prioritizing what still has priority, what needs to be looked at, what needs to be set aside?
Yeah, just, again, it's kind of just a temperature check of where people, when they're seeing these goals and objectives, what they consider to be still high priority or not, based on the information that we currently have adopted. It's not saying that we are going to completely adjust plans based on that, but it does, again, give us an idea. We've had, again, internal departments do this activity in our DRC meetings, we did have the engagement session. We've had some engagement that's been nice. It's, it's a helpful, again, tool for us to just get an idea of where people think we're at right now. Because we do see it one way in the city as to where we're at with policies and things like that. But other people may see it differently on progress that we made.
Okay.
Or we may be being harder on ourselves, who knows? Is, in this very back table, it's some post-its and some markers that was basically for Ottawa. So if there is a goal that you, a goal that you would get or adopted, that's something.
Wow. How do you put all those back? I took too many of each one. Um, I mean, it needs to be a priority, but it might also need
That's, yeah, you're welcome to do that, that is in that I audio. I did.
Right. Like housing, it's a high priority, but we may need to address the types of
Yeah, no, that's
You're being a very good sport, Diana, we appreciate it.
There's nothing that warms my heart more than quorum.
It's okay, I will, I had the opportunity to go to that community development meeting at the Historical Society, and I'm sure there will be other opportunities to participate.
That is the plan, we're just going to keep pumping out those engagement sessions until, you know, hit a critical mass of fifteen people or something. Are you finished first, you get a prize?
I get to chair the rest of the meeting, right? That's my prize.
And there is no real, like, whiz-bang of an ending on this, other than like updates again, planning on having chapter that preliminary due, dated for y'all. Comments on, oh, while we start on initiating chapter three, I think a lot of this is pretty productive, as far as outreach opportunities on the goals now, that's really the perfect time to start jumping into the different community connections. Opportunities there, so plan on getting those out, and a new survey up as well. And Diana, that was also really helpful about the seniors in high school. That's a very specific group that you definitely tailor something to. They're scary, but yeah, that's a good outlook, so.
Well, just thinking about who were the seniors when the last plan came out, those are now people who are established community members somewhere in their forties.
Yep.
I was twelve when the plan was adopted.
There is a couple of projects.
We've got a couple that are real close that, oh.
Mission one, our office.
Yeah. Look to me like, um, they can, I'm sitting here just falling asleep, but looks to me making really big progress out at, in Lakes. I don't see any activity at the corner of Davis and Wilson.
Conversations there are ongoing.
I know, but I just, I, I, I remember how needed to be done, it needed to be done, and now it's done, and now there's no progress.
That has a memory.
So, and there's a couple of other things I see going on around town that gives me some hope for housing. People sniffing around the edges, I think, you know, as they look at a couple of developments, as they look at the development out in the southwest part of the community out there, and as they look at the Coes, as they look at a couple other, the infill, I think developers are getting a little more interest in the community.
The infill aspect, I think, has been fairly solid, ever since fairly comprehensive map of infill opportunity in the community and helpful.
We're looking forward to actually formulate. When people have requested it.
Speaking of infills, I see that someone's already moved into one of the new houses that was where the old campus apartments used to be. And looks like the other one's on the market now, so it's exciting to see that lot have two houses on it.
Developers who are very consistent about getting a couple of those opportunities.
Again, I just want to say thank you to the staff for all the work you're doing on this. I actually think this is the right time to do it, because the world has shifted so much in the last fifteen years in terms of technology, and then the pandemic really changed a lot of our priorities as well. So I think this is actually a really great time to be working on this plan.
It's, it is always interesting to read some of these older documents. And just deal with some of the updates that have to be done when it comes to tech. It really is a round shift when it comes to some of that. I mean, again, some of the updates and page, like, has a bunch of stuff on it, as opposed to whatever was happening. So, even just at the basic level.
Yes, we had websites back in 2004.
I, I may dial up until I went to college, so I never got on the computer.
They weren't horse-powered, they were regular electricity. Wasn't even dial-up anymore.
You know, I, I was just thinking, you mentioned annexation, and that's always a dirty word, you know, if you don't want to be annexed. And I was thinking about, you just said 2004. That was prior to, I think it was Citizens United versus New London, which basically went to the Supreme Court and really changed the communities can't just part-blanch annex anymore. They've got to, they've got to pay a premium for the land, they've got to show, there's, what is it, the seven criteria that they have to show in order to
Is that annexation or eminent domain?
Well, both, it's, it's
Both.
Annexation was considered eminent domain in that, because they wanted to change, they wanted to annex a piece of ground that was a battlefield, and then zone it commercial, so Walmart could build a new supercenter on it. And so that, it was a, it was a whole, it was a whole thing. Yes, it was eminent domain, but it also included annexation.
And the current interest we have had is an individual, it's very much someone who, as a whole, yeah, sort of just been on the periphery of everyone.
Absolutely, because what you have to pay when you do it is just what the steps you have to go through, it's a lot easier to wait for somebody to say, hey, we want to be part of the city, we want to be part of the city services.
Even that's, that's a process, so. Thank you all for being the activity this evening, appreciate that. Again, I had definitely something geared toward an audience that is maybe not as in items, but still helpful, still kind of gives a picture of what the discussion, again, was really helpful this evening. The goals and objectives portion of the plan. Rest to do, much reaching out and maybe to kind of update it, but I think that kind of wraps up comments from my end as far as this evening.
Thank you, Zach. Lucas, comments?
Just appreciate everybody being here for Quorum and for your service to the community.
Apologize for being late.
No problem, you got here, you got here. I just, you know, I always measure our community. When I started in public service forty years ago, I could walk into any restaurant in town, any business in town, and know everybody that was in that business. Now I walk in, I may not know anybody, and that's a good thing, because that means new money's coming into town, that means new ideas are coming into town. There's a whole range of things that are positive about that. You know, if you're old, you, you don't want to see a lot of change, but change is, change is inevitable if you want to grow. And this is just going to be another component in, in that growth, and I hope the people that are living here now, in twenty years, they walk in, and they don't know anybody in the so, and I hope they have more businesses to walk into. Anyway, with that said, is there anything else, guys, gals? See Diana shaking her head, no, either one of you? Okay, we'll move on then to item number six, which is unfinished business, do we have any? Item number seven, which is staff comments, do we have any?
Again, thank you.
Okay. Item number eight, which is commissioner comments, I know nobody has any. In other words, it's after eight o'clock. Announcements, next Planning Commission meeting has been canceled, the one that's scheduled for November twenty-eighth has been canceled. So the next meeting, as it stands right now, will be December eleventh at seven o'clock on a Wednesday, right here. And with that, I would accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We had stereo, so we'll take one of those as a motion and one of those as a second, and we'll say, all in favor, say aye.
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 Close.